I would like to welcome everyone here this evening. It's always nice to move out and see some new faces. Thank you for coming, appreciate that. And with that, the court will call the roll.
Philbrook?
Here.
Brockmeyer?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Dariso?
Here.
Downey?
Yes.
Higer?
Here.
Oswald?
Here.
Tim?
Here.
Okay, a present. I hope everyone's had an opportunity to take a look at the minutes. If so, and there's no corrections, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. All those in favor say aye, and those who don't say no, the ayes have it. Approval of bills. I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would move we approve the lake bills, the ad hoc bills, the lake water bed, and all others.
Okay, motion has been made by Alderman Dariso, second by Alderman Campbell, that we approve the, approve the bills, the lake bills, the lake ad hoc bills, the watershed bills. With that, the court will call the roll.
Downey?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Oswald?
Aye.
Higer?
Yes.
Dariso?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Aye.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Motion is carried eight to zero. Now they'll go to public comment, and, yes.
Since I was unable to get my paperwork in for correspondence, I'd like to read a letter that I've written, a letter to the editor.
Okay.
And it says, "Dear citizens, I have heard you loud and clear regarding your concerns about wasting tax paid on money. According to attorney Jacob Smallhorn, any information that an alderman needs to perform their duties should be listed in his or her IML handbook. I was registered to attend the September IML conference in Chicago along with six other officials. Upon registering, I was informed that the tickets and reservations were nonrefundable. After hearing your concerns, I took it upon myself to investigate. On August 22nd, I canceled my reservation at the Hilton, listing between $262 and $312 per night, plus taxes and fees, my reservation to the conference, which was $360, and my IML, or my Amtrak ticket, which was $59, thereby saving the city several dollars. After canceling the above mentioned, I then verified with each entity that only my reservations have been canceled. I am giving the city of Carlinville $50 to cover the nonrefundable cancellation fee of the IML. Respectfully, Alderman Kim Higer."
Thank you, Kim, and we'll go ahead and place your correspondence on file.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now go to Deanna. How is she doing?
My name is Jean Opigard. I live down on Southwest Street. And I fell in love with the city thirty years ago when my daughter was in college at Blackburn. But older, and living here retired, and finding out so many of the businesses on the square are not accessible to me, or to anyone with a wheelchair, a walker. Some of those steps are really, really high. And I'm wondering if there can't be something done to make it accessible. At my age, I can afford to go out to eat more, but I can't get into the restaurants.
I tell you what, there's several of them, and I'm not sure. I know that once, once there's a new owner and they're coming in, a lot of times that's up to them to go ahead and make the handicap accessible. There is a young lady down in Bunker Hill. I don't know if you know her or not. She, she's a lovely lady, a young lady, and she has been in and out of here. And we've been working together to try to find out how we can go about doing that for you. Because she has, I think, a spinal injury, and so her, her equipment and her car and everything has been equipped to handle that. So, yeah, Alicia, I believe, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll, we'll continue to work on that for you.
Thank you.
Public comment.
John, you want to? Yeah, just a short comment. Last week, I spent five hours with Lieutenant Graham in a squad car, and was extremely impressed, and found the time worthwhile. I'm a firm believer in Ozzy and Harriet, and Leave It To Beaver, and I found out that maybe it's not quite what I thought it was. And I was impressed with the professionalism, and the insight, and the kind of amazing wisdom that Lieutenant Graham showed in instinctively somehow detecting trouble when everything seemed perfectly normal to me. We had a stop with an uninsured vehicle, which was handled very professionally in that after about ten minutes, the car was discovered in a glove box, that ticket was torn up with a shoplifter. We had a couple of issues with individuals that frankly were disturbing. Goofy stuff going on, and a stolen bicycle, and a shoplifter. This was all in about four and a half hours with one officer. So, my compliments to the City Police, and I look forward to riding again on a night shift to find out what else I don't know.
That was a temptation. Have they told you, John, that the night shift kind of goes into the day shift now?
Yes.
Or vice versa?
Right.
There's no distinction anymore?
Yeah, crazy stuff.
Well, thank you for your, for doing that, John. You're a, he's, Johnson's a new commissioner, and we appreciate you.
If you haven't, if you haven't done it, or haven't done it in a while, I recommend spending a part of a shift at least.
Thank you. Also with us this evening is, well, I'm going to call you, it's Alexander, but I've been calling Alex, okay? And Alex, the?
McColling.
Yes. Alex is our summer, well, I say summer attorney, he starts during the summer, but he's going to be here with us, I believe, what, probably all year, maybe?
Yeah, until next year.
He's a Blackburn senior, and his days are going to be Tuesdays and Thursdays. And Alex is going to be working here in the, here, here at City Hall. He's already had a couple of days under his belt, and he's been, you were pretty busy today, I believe, right?
Yes, ma'am.
This was a Monday. So, Alex, you want to stand up, and we want to say hi to you, okay? So, welcome aboard. All right. Okay, Carla, I get to? Oh, Nancy Jane?
In reference to Blackburn breaks my mind. Maybe advertisement for Blackburn restaurant? I mean, it's a cheap place to eat and wonderful food. Breast vegetable bar, round, better than over split field everywhere. It's great, and the price is right.
I see, yeah, there are particularly like?
Well, we go almost every day out there. No cheaper place to eat, but it's good food.
I've got a comment. I was here about three weeks ago, and it's about the water lines and the street's conditions. And I was complaining then, the guy said he'd be down to work on the street. Nothing has been done. Who is to maintain the streets while this construction's going on?
Okay, Dan, you want to address that, this gentleman here?
Yeah. Good evening. Down on Oakland, okay, there was a new water line that was placed in and out there. And it's my understanding, after checking into it today, that the streets, or the ditches where the water line was put in, that the, the group that did the work down there is responsible for the ditch. The place the roadway back into the condition it was after, prior to, would be our responsibility. As most of you know by now, we've had a lot of water main breaks over the last couple of months here. For the street department down there, they're operating on about half staff. And from May 1st through the end of July, I think it was, we had 535 work orders that have been accomplished over that time. And we're, we have sixty waiting that we're working on, okay? So, when we have a water main break, or something to that effect, of course, you know, we break off the work orders and we go to do that, okay? And then some of the work that needs to be done, like for instance, you may have a sinkhole next to a basin for water, okay? And you say, well, you know, that should be pretty simple. Well, there's a hole in the pipe, and the area around that is concreted in. And so, the street department doesn't have the equipment to bust up the concrete or to get down there to fix the pipe, which is the cause for the sinkhole next to the basin, okay? So, trying to work with the street department guys now to find out some of those work orders, if we can't take some of those, like ones that are tree trimming, you know, a truck comes through town or something, and tree limbs are almost touching the top of the truck. Or out on Brushy Road, that limbs are starting to hang over the road, that kind of stuff. If we can't take some of those, then combine them, and perhaps use a contractor that's in town here to trim those trees up or something, so that those guys can do, do other things. But it's pretty tough, when you're running on half staff, and you have these water line replacements over in the standard edition. And we have the work that we did in the spring here already. And those contractors call in Julie's, and there's other people that are doing work that it's tough to get it all done. And when it's super hot, like it's been this summer, you know, that slows the process also. I can say that over the weekend here, that on Saturday, one of the guys was out early for a couple service line breaks over in the standard edition, that they over at Bullburn Mark. At five o'clock, I got a phone call from the police department. Had somebody had water getting in their basement on West Main. That turned out to be a service line leak, perhaps on their property or right at the end of ours. It's right on the curb over there. They're going to contact a, a plumber, and they're going to dig that up and find that out. And then whoever it is, then we'll have to take care of it. That'll dictate whose responsibility it is. And then Monday, we had a loss of water pressure down on 314?
Charles.
North Charles. And so, they were down there digging up that line and fixing that water main break today. So, you know, we're trying to schedule these things, but as these events occur, it's, it's getting very problematic to try and set any kind of schedule. Or, and I hesitate myself with the way things are now, to say that we will be down there in three weeks. Because if we do, because if I say that, and then these things happen and we can't get there, then, you know, that upsets people too, okay? So, that's the situation.
For Dan, didn't we say back in June or July, we were talking about the contractor coming back with all of his equipment to repair all the ditch works and all that? And this is now September. Is he coming back with his equipment to repair all the previous work done?
I, I?
For doing ditch repairs?
Yes, they are coming back to do that. They're going to come back, reset the ground, and plant grass. And I'm assuming they'll put straw over the top of that, all those kinds?
Do you know when that's scheduled? We're now September, so?
I do not have a date for that.
It was in our month.
Huh?
In our month. Can't plant grass unless it's?
Yeah, I was discussing when I was first talking about that. Yep, was that generally you wouldn't saw that until, you know, September or so, something like that. But I do not have the, the date that they're going to start on.
I mean, after you told me back in July, it would be like September, he'd bring his equipment back and do all the repairs, and I just?
We just had a gentleman in the other day, and I think the gentleman made a comment that, yes, they are going to be?
But I think specific to his, his question here is, is that the, because the condition of the road, the rock is rolling into the ditch, that's plaguing, plaguing, plaguing his culvert, which is causing the water to run over his driveway and wash his driveway out.
Is that correct?
And I understand that's happening, and I, you know, and I'm trying my best to try and, you know, make these things happen, so that we can attend to these things, okay? But that's the current situation as it stands.
Is that what's going on, sir?
Well, in a way, yep, because I've asked this question three or four times, and I was told that the contractor was supposed to maintain the roads until the contract was done.
Right.
They haven't done anything towards fixing the roads.
I think that yours is probably, his is probably on the list to come back and, you know, complete properly.
Sure.
Yeah.
Like on my, my street down there. Why did they cut the manhole open in the middle of the street? They took the asphalt off about two and a half inches thick and left it. And they were working on a water line, not the sewer. And we've been driving around it all summer.
What's the location of that?
In corner Oakland and Center.
Okay.
I don't even know why they opened it.
Oakland and Center. We'll check it again. We'll get it all right. Thank you, sir. Any other?
I have. I just wanted to make everyone aware that petitions are available to pick up at City Hall now for the election in April of 2019. There'll be an alderman's position in each ward. So, and petitions need to be back in to me by November 26th.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, we'll go out to public comment, under old business, FOIA lawsuits. That's for me.
I want to bring this back up again. First off, I have a question. Mr. Shearing stated last meeting that he was going to give with you concerning some sort of proposal. I can see by your look that's not happened.
No.
But he was supposed to give with you, he said, about a proposal to combine all of these FOIA lawsuits into one, and maybe offer a negotiation with the watchdogs.
Okay.
Or John Kraft, or whoever has filed whatever of these lawsuits. So, he's not done that.
Um, no. No, unless he's, has he talked to you any at all?
We've had some discussions about those things, but no, we haven't finalized anything.
No. And do we have any more court dates that are set? The, the city has to go to court for any of these suits?
Yeah.
Yes, we do?
Tomorrow afternoon, there's the attorneys in Chicago have asked for a telephone hearing, so tomorrow afternoon, there's a telephone hearing.
And that's on another, like?
No, it's the same cases.
Two, three, four, five, or whatever?
No, I think this is still on the first case.
Oh, okay, okay.
But yeah, the cases, I think, you were there the day, I think they were consolidated in the, at the last hearing, they were consolidated before one judge.
He asked, well, he did ask for a change of judge, if I remember.
But they consolidated?
That was granted, and they were all consolidated.
Part of the whole consolidation?
Yeah, they were all consolidated. So, there is a hearing tomorrow, that's a telephone hearing.
Okay. Well, the reason I ask is, I hate to keep making an issue of the fact that we had voted to, to give over the information that had been requested over a year and a half ago. And we're still, the thing tomorrow is on the first lawsuit, so that means that we're still fighting that initial lawsuit. And then we've got a consolidated, hopefully just one more group to go. I am very concerned for the amount of money that this is costing us. And we don't know yet how much this is going to cost us because we haven't received a bill. I talked with Julie today, and she said she has not received a bill since like March of 2017 on any of this work that he's done for us. So, we don't know what this is costing us. I don't know if we need, and this is not the issue that I wanted to bring up tonight, but it kind of leads into possibly what we need is some sort of an ordinance that when we hire professional services, we get timely bills so that finance can keep track of what's being spent on these things. So, I might bring that up with finance, and we can talk about that. The other thing I wanted to address was something that was said to me by Mr. Shearing at the last meeting. And I brought the paper to read the quote, because I do want to address it. It was a mistaken statement by him. He said, "What has kept us from being a complete disclosure of records are records that don't exist from two alleged meetings that didn't occur that only you seem to be concerned about," Shearing said. And I have a feeling that there is maybe a big misunderstanding, we could say, on one of those two meetings. And I have, I brought pictures that I want to show to each of you concerning that first alleged meeting. When I came up for, this was concerning the petition challenge of Deanna's petitions, the mayor's petitions. When I came up to the hearing that night, I saw cars, vehicles, that, people that I knew. And when I walked into City Hall, I have an extra. When I walked into City Hall, I didn't see anybody around. So, I walked down the hall where the door was closed into the public works department, and opened the door, and there sat all of these people. And when I asked what was going on, what I was told was, "Would I please leave? We're having a meeting, I'm advising my clients." So, I said, "Yes, I would leave." I walked out, and I had set my things down out here, and I went back and got my phone, because I thought, you know what, this isn't right. This is a committee of the council, of the city. And I knew that there was no posting for this meeting, there was no agenda. So, I went in and took a picture. I took the picture and sent it to my friend, Sherry Brianza, who was challenging the petitions of the mayor. And I sent it to her stating, "I don't know if your attorney would want this, but here it is, this is going on." I did not give that picture to anybody else. It's been in my camera for two years. But I have a feeling that this is something that has been requested. This is one of the two meetings that Mr. Shearing said does not exist, was only in my imagination. There's the picture. It did happen. Now, what we do with that information, I don't know. I think we say, "We're sorry, we made a mistake, we didn't have an agenda." And we move on. Why can't we just do that, and give them the rest of the information they want, and be done with all of these lawsuits? Maybe I'm just totally oversimplifying the issue in my mind. It just seems so easy to me that if somebody's asked for something, you give it to them. If you don't have what they're asking for, you put out a statement, "I'm sorry, we don't have that," you know, and, and you're done. So, I wanted to make a motion to have Dan O'Brien take over these lawsuits as our city attorney, and come to an agreement, a settlement. I'm hesitating to do that, and just waiting to see what Mr. Shearing does come up with. So, I'm not going to make my motion tonight. I am going to wait and see what Mr. Shearing does. But I just want to say that eventually, I think we need to make that motion and move on. And that's pretty much what I have to say.
So, it has its back, you're saying that we get it wrong, just pay the fine, whatever it is, and move on?
If there's a fine, yeah.
Rather than keep dragging it out, paying, shoring, continuing on, fighting something that doesn't exist.
Exactly.
Any other comments?
I have one. I agree completely. This has gone on long enough for Mr. Shearing to come here and speak down to members of the council when obviously it happened. Enough is enough.
Any other comments? If not, we'll move on then. Thank you, Bill. Under new business, due to the presentation of the annual report. And, um, can we move on? Okay.
Hi again. Once a year, at the end of the one-year period for an organization that we're currently contracted with, we do an annual report. And I've given, I've given each of you a copy of that annual report that's in front of your desk there. And I've made a little six-page sort of highlight, if you'll go with it, okay? So, on page one, and I like to start with the budget, because usually that's, you know, where everybody's interested in what's going on. Okay, so with budget year number one, it was a nine-month period, okay? So, it was a full twelve-month month. And the original estimated cost was 1.85 million for one year's worth of public works, okay? That monthly cost to the city was $205,667. At the end of the nine-month period, we, you know, we settle up with the client, we even up the books, so, you know, we're ready to go into year two. And so, in June, I presented a check to the council for $71,526, and a rebate to the city, okay? So, for budget year number two, which we're in now, which will be May 1st through April 30, that'll be a whole twelve-month period, okay? The contract is for $2,170,466. So, that monthly cost to the city is $180,872, okay? As opposed to the 205,667 that was in the first nine-month period, okay? So, at the end of the year two, we'll settle up and finalize it. If we come in at budget, or if we come in, in at budget, okay? That'll be approximately a $300,000 savings to the city that they could use to put towards, you know, whatever projects you guys deem necessary. And I think based on my discussions earlier here with, you know, work orders and all that kind of stuff, I'm sure we can find a home for all that, okay? The second page here has a pie chart on it, okay? And it's a little bit of a breakout of how the money gets spent into different categories, okay? So, you can see that?
I'm hesitating to do that and just waiting to see what Mr. Shearing does come up with. So I'm not going to make my motion tonight. I am going to wait and see what Mr. Shearing does. But I just want to say that eventually, I think we need to make that motion and move on. And that's pretty much what I have to say.
So as you're saying that, that we get wrong, just pay the fine, whatever it is, and move on.
If there's a fine, yeah.
Rather than keep dragging it out, paying, sharing, continuing on, fighting something that doesn't do good.
Exactly.
Any other comments?
I have one. I agree completely. This has gone on long enough for Mr. Shearing to come here and speak down to members of the council when obviously it happened. Enough is enough.
Any other comments? If not, we'll move on then. Thank you, Beth. On your new business, you'll go to the presentation of the annual report. And, um, maybe, do you have?
Sure.
Okay.
Hi again. Once a year, at the end of the, uh, one-year period for, uh, an organization that Word Current is contracted with, we do an annual report. And I've given, I've, uh, given each of you a copy of that annual report in front of your desk there. And I've made a little six-page sort of highlight, you know, to go with it, okay? So on page one, and I'd like to start with the budget because usually that's, you know, where everybody's interested in what's going on. Okay, so with budget year number one, uh, it was a nine-month period, okay? So it was a full twelve months and the original estimated cost was 1.85 million for one year's worth of public works, okay? That monthly cost to the city was 205,667 dollars. At the end of the nine-month period, uh, we, you know, we settle up with the client, we even up the books. So, you know, we're ready to go into year two. And so in June, I presented a check to the council for 71,526 dollars and a rebate to the city, okay? So for budget year number two, which we're in now, which will be May 1st through April 30th, that'll be a whole 12-month period, okay? The contract is for 2,170,466. So that monthly cost to the city is 180,872 dollars, okay? As opposed to the 205,667 that was in the first nine-month period, okay? So at the end of the year two, we'll settle up and finalize it. If we come in at budget, or if we come in at, in at budget, okay? That'll be approximately a $300,000 savings to the city that they could use to put towards, you know, whatever project you guys deem necessary. And I think based on my discussions earlier here with, uh, you know, work orders and all that kind of stuff, I'm sure we can find a home for all that, okay? Uh, the second page here has a pie chart on it, okay? And it's a little bit of a breakout of how the money gets spent into different categories, okay? So you can see that about 700K or almost 50% of the budget goes towards labor, okay? And another 25% of that goes towards maintenance and repair. So approximately 70% of the budget goes towards employing people and then people to do those maintenance and repair projects, okay? Then you have, uh, other things like lab supplies, uh, chemicals, uh, chemicals came in at about 92,000, something like that. And, uh, office supplies and safety, okay? One of the things Word Current always does when they first come on a project is they go out and they do a safety audit of all your facilities, okay? And that's what is summarized here on the next page, okay? Page three. So we have one recordable incident for the year. We had a guy that was crossing a ditch and slipped and poured some, uh, cardboard in his knee. And, uh, he's on the mend now. So we had 234 items that we needed addressed as a part of the safety audit, okay? And at the end of the fiscal year there, uh, April 30th, we have 54 left. Since I've been here, now we're down to 41 and we're working on, uh, making arrangements and all that kind of stuff, buying materials, that kind of stuff. But we don't, you know, we don't want to overspend, you know, that kind of thing. So we're, we try and work on it incrementally, try and knock out a few a month, okay? Something to that effect. Page four kind of gives you a overview of some of the things that were accomplished this year in that the wastewater treatment plant discharged 289.3 million gallons of water. That's a lot of water and a lot of treatment and takes a lot of hard work by the folks down there at the wastewater treatment plant. Same thing at the water treatment plant. They produced 231.7 million gallons of water this year. Revenue collected was 1,721,000 upfront. And, uh, the street department, they had 865 requests for services. Uh, those include job orders, work orders, shut offs, Julies. Uh, those totaled 1,558 when you put those all together, okay? Request for services. So moving forward here into year two, uh, I'm working on a sort of a capital plan or a capital, list of capital projects for each one of the departments, the water, the wastewater and the street department, okay? And we have lots of stuff that we need to move forward here on, uh, to make Carlinville an even better city to live in. So, uh, you know, we want to separate the combined sewers so that when we get these big rains, our flow doesn't go from 1 million gallons a day to 18.75 million gallons, okay? Uh, we need, we obviously need to do as much work as we can on the water distribution system because of all the main breaks and a lot of the service lines that are around town. The water plant's SCADA system, it needs an alarm system out there so that if the tanks get so low that you'll get an alarm and people will know they got to get out there, get the water plant started up. We had an incident earlier this year when we had the water main break on West Main that nearly drained the towers. So I don't want to see that happen where we have a, you know, citywide boil order or anything like that. So we're, uh, working with the engineering firm to look into getting us a SCADA alarm system for those levels, okay? Uh, we have sewer plant improvements that, uh, you know, are going to be necessary down there. Uh, you know, the, the age of the sewer plant, uh, you know, it's not as old as the lake, but, uh, you know, it's, it's technology is old, you know, those kinds of things. So we'll need to make improvements down there. And, uh, we, we want to continue to replace water meters. They're old, but may not be registering as much flow as what, uh, they should be, okay? And, you know, we have a foreman down at the street department, or down at the, yeah, the street department, who's, uh, he's in the twilight of his career here. He's been here almost 30 years. And we have a part-time guy that's down at the wastewater plant. And, you know, we have, uh, Jim Knight, who does a fantastic job out the, uh, water department. So we're not looking at replacing all three, but, uh, we certainly are, need to start looking at, uh, you know, where we go here, five, six, seven years down the road, okay? And then, uh, as we transition, we need to do water source and, you know, modernization of the facilities here. So, uh, you know, little better trucks, uh, some of this equipment that I was talking about that was needed to do some of these maintenance and repair items for work orders, for sinkholes and all that kind of stuff. We have lots of work to do here yet. But, uh, I think it's been a successful first year and I think we're off to a good start here in the second. And, uh, of course, my boss, Greg Freedens here, so, uh, you know, with his help and with the folks at corporate and with the hard work of the folks here in Carlinville, I think we can, uh, you know, we can do it if we continue to make improvements. And so if you guys have any comments or any things that you, you know, would like to maybe see a little different or something like that, maybe, uh, you know, Scott Craig and I, let us know. And, uh, yes, sir.
Yeah, I have just a quick moment. Yeah, on the budget, it's 1.85 and 2.1, that's our total budget, not just the public works. So that's based on the 8% of the total budget, I think is where your guys contract for it. It's a total budget of whatever we come up with every year. And then it was amazing fact, and you kind of touched on it, the wastewater treatment plant, 289 million and then we only produce 230. So that means 50 million gallons of rainwater went through the wastewater plant.
Right. And, uh, you know, in a sense though, this is, when you have things like this go on, it kind of helps you to recognize perhaps where, you know, problems are. For example, uh, those 60 work orders that I was talking about that are outstanding now at the, at the street department, okay? About eight, you know, 15 to 18 of those or so, something like that, involve drainage, okay? So I had a request from you for a culvert over on Thomas, okay? I went down there and I took pictures of that culvert. You can see about this top part of this culvert right here, okay? But even if we jet that culvert, I'm not convinced that the water's going to run through that culvert and it's going to go where it's supposed to go. Because I think a lot of these ditches and stuff were probably shaped 60, 50, who knows how many, how many years ago? And so now I'm kind of thinking, I wonder how much it would cost to have somebody come in here with some, you know, just a transit or something and shoot elevations on all these things and perhaps, you know, reshape these ditches and stuff to where they'll flow water. And that might make a big difference on what we have to spend on treating water at the sewer plant because we have to put chemicals and all that stuff into that down there. And so what you kind of find out is all these things are kind of interlaced. You know, one thing affects another thing, which affects another thing. So, uh, you know, I'm, I'm not confident enough tonight to stand up here and say, "Here's what you need to do." But I'm, I'm confident in saying that we're, you know, we're trying to gather as much information as we can and we're appreciating all the patience that so many of the citizens of Carlinville have shown us at Word Current and you guys for, on the work orders and, uh, those kinds of things. And so we're, you know, we're trying to get together, you know, that information so that we can bring it to you and say, you know, here's what we think. What do you guys want to do? Because in the end, you guys call the shots.
And your comment, Dan, about reshaping the, the ditches and stuff, I mean, that would be very, it costs you on the front end, but you're going to save so much because your holding tank that you got at the wastewater plant might not be as, need to be as big as it's replaced because your water going this natural way to rivers and creeks rather than through the holding tank and processing.
You are a thousand percent right, right? In that, uh, if you don't have that water go to the plant, then, uh, if you don't process that, it doesn't create sludge, which in turn you're going to haul out, which in turn is going to put miles on your truck and you're going to put fuel in that truck, that kind of thing. I'm looking at the water stuff for this last year here. Our loss rate for water was like 30%, okay? So like one every three gallons we're not collecting for. So why is that? Probably some in the meters, probably some leaks, probably some from flushing, okay? But we want to try and nail those stuff down and find out what's going on with those and attack those where we can, okay? So that's what's going on in the background, okay? Any other questions? Thank you guys for everything. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Andrew.
Dave, did you want to speak on the, um, the...
Well, I, I do have an hour and a half presentation, but we can go with this and you guys can take that home and look at it. Okay, and then we'll, we'll go with that.
So it's going to save you an hour and a half.
Okay.
But do take a look at this because it's very, um, very informative. And thank you, uh, guys for putting all that together. It's really nice. Thank you, yes. Okay, next on the list is, let's see, oh, hire a full-time replacement officer. Cindy?
Um, well, we had this conversation last meeting because, um, Officer Wilford was leaving us and now we have Officer Novel who's retiring. So we're having a conversation again. I'm not going to repeat the things that I said last time, um, so we'll just skip all that. You know how I feel about it and I know how you feel about it. Um, I would just say that we, when we set a budget, we give the chief a budget. We ask him to operate within it and he's doing that. Um, covering our city very well with high-quality officers in the, within the budget that we asked him to set. So we're just, um, I'm just asking that we consider allowing him to keep operating within his budget at full staff. I did talk with him briefly. We're going to have a little more extended conversation, but I asked him briefly if he needs 12 officers full-time. He stated that he probably needs 14 and an additional office person. So, um, we're not asking to go above what we already got. I think it's reasonable request to stay at full staff. Um, I think the council historically seems to have the habit of setting a budget during the time when we would be discussing, we wanted to change how much money we were spending on public safety and setting it pretty much status quo. And then sometime within the year, having a shock moment where we make this dispatch or some police officers feel like they may just suddenly lose their jobs. And I don't think that's a very responsible way of handling that conversation, nor do I feel like it's very respectful of people who do public safety for a living. So I think, um, we need to think about those things and, and respect those things as we make the decisions that we're making tonight. Um, you know, the budget comes up again and if you guys want to have a conversation about the staffing at that time and make a comprehensive approach to, um, taking an audit of what we're doing with our staff. Um, I think that's far more, uh, receivable and responsible than suddenly, out of nowhere, deciding that we're not public staffing our, um, our public servants. So, um, with that said, I'll just make a motion that we, uh, go out to, we'll talk to the business commissioner again about hiring to replace, um, Novel and thanking him for his 30 years of service to our community.
And before I get, take a second on that, um, I'm going to thank Jill and Beth. Uh, you both wanted to make comments or make a motion to or add to that motion of Officer Novel. So if you wanted to make any kind of comment, that would be fine.
I just wanted to thank you for your service and I've spent here a lot of years.
30 years, yeah, yeah. So, um, I would entertain a second for the motion.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made by Alderman Campbell, second by Alderman DiRiso, that we go ahead and, um, hire a replacement for Officer Novel. Again, we want to thank Officer Novel for his 30 years of, uh, service to the Carlinville Police Department. And, um, we, he will be missed, but, uh, again, we wish him well on his new, uh, employment. And so with that, we need a replacement, uh, for Officer Novel and with that...
Again, I just want to make sure everybody understands, uh, this is not a surprise because our former finance lady in her letter dated here, January 24th, 2018, says that we are underfunding our police pension, which is a huge concern to me. Uh, also in that letter was a audit finding from our auditors that said we are underfunding our police pension. Uh, currently, last year was 3.7 million. Um, and, uh, I did some quick mathematical here and it looks like we usually gain about 200, uh, 300,000 dollars a year. So it probably is about 4 million right now that we are underfunded the police budget pension. Uh, that means we owe 4 million dollars to the police pension fund. Um, I think, uh, last time, Alderman Campbell was going to bring back a plan of how we were going to address the underfunding of the police pension fund. Apparently that's not going to be done. Is that correct?
Well, given that we had two weeks, I can't really figure out how to make up 4 million dollars in two weeks, but I certainly like to try.
This should be tabled until we can find out how we're going to address this police pension.
Motion on the floor.
There is a motion on the floor, but I think this should be tabled. This is just ridiculous that we're just keep pushing us down. And pretty soon, another council's going to come on here and they're going to say, "What the hell were these people thinking? They're just kicking a cannon down the road like everything else. Let's address this now. Let's take care of it."
Okay, there is a motion on the floor and a second. And, uh, if there's no other comments, uh, clerk will call the roll.
DiRiso?
Aye.
Brockmire?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Billbrook?
Aye.
Downey?
No.
Tiger?
No.
Oswald?
Aye.
Tim?
No.
Mayor?
Motion is, motion is for four and I will vote yes. I believe our police department has to, um, have that extra officer for a replacement of Officer Novel at this time. So, um, I'll vote yes. Okay, with that, um, anything else?
All right.
Yes.
Just a quick, Friday, there's a luncheon for Officer Novel, 11:00.
Friday at 11:30. Friday at 11:30, there will be a luncheon for, here in this room, uh, for Officer Novel. Okay, um, Dan?
Real quick, I'm requiring a press release to give to the local newspaper here, WSMI, and, uh, something on the website, but this is a map. You know how I like maps. And, uh, the pink lines show where the oil and shipping will take place here in the city.
They're going to need a bigger paper.
They're going to need a bigger paper, okay? And, uh, so you can see that my map's a little deficient because it doesn't have a broken tag on there, so I put that big letters here. And I have the lake roads and the parking areas on there either. So those are also included, okay? But, uh, I'll get together with the folks that's in the newspaper for this Thursday. I'll get that in the works tomorrow and we'll pick that up there. So just a quick reminder that we're going to be doing that on the 11th to 12th.
We make sure that we post that on social media and the city website as well.
Any other comments? Okay, I would entertain a motion to...
Motion, Jer.
Motion by Alderman Downey, and by Alderman DiRiso, although they're very senior, close, and we're now...